We are just a couple of minutes away from beginning our meeting. And before we begin, I would invite you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and then Randall Harriman will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me.
Devin, Father, we thank you this day for all your blessings. We thank you for the blessings you bestowed on our city, Lord. I pray that you be with us tonight and the decisions we make on this city. Help us to do it in a manner well pleasing to you, Lord, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Randall. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, July 26, 2022. And we do have large print agendas available. Who does?
Scott.
Okay, Scott has those. Thank you, Scott. Putting you to work tonight. Appreciate it. And then with that said, I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson? Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Kevin Flores?
Here.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Here.
Ernest Cate?
Here.
All right, thank you. We do everyone's present. And Amelia's on Zoom. Thank you, Amelia. Item five, comments from citizens. Do we have, this is the portion of each council meeting that the city council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have anyone that would like to address the council, we just ask that you go to the podium, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that the city council won't take any action tonight on whatever you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, approval of minutes. We're approving them for two meetings, council, if you'll remember from last week or last meeting. So if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Mayor, on the July 12 meeting, since we did our award changes, we did it in April. I believe that 90 days had passed by the time the July 12 meeting was performed. So we need to change the award representations for Powell, Williams, and Lawson on the meeting, on the minutes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Brian. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes with that change. Okay, have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All of the folks on the same side? All right, thank you. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move for A and B.
We have a motion for options A and B. And a second. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, item eight, economic quarterly report, presented by Scott Edmondson, Vice President of Economic Development for the Springdale Chamber of Commerce. Scott?
Yes, sir. I left a copy of the report for each of you there, just to hit a couple of high points real quick. On job numbers, there were 39,435 people employed in Springdale as of the end of May. That's up almost 2,000 people since May of 2021. Springdale also has one of the lowest, second lowest unemployment rates in the state at 2.1%. That too, as of May 31st. Sales tax numbers, 1.8 million, over 1.8 million for the June receipts. And that's a 12 and a half percent increase over June of 2021. I've got several projects underway. Project, the Public Facilities Board sold four acres on Kendrick Avenue to a company to develop for a distribution center. Work has already began there on that project. And then the Steel Yard project on a mountain road, they're nearing completion. Hopefully open up and running in September. So several other things going on around town. I'll be happy to answer any questions. But again, see something on the report, please let me know.
Anything for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. All right, we're at item nine. I'm going to ask Christie Bennett to meet Denise and me up at the podium, please. I'll follow you. Okay.
12 years as the payroll accountant. She has made many people happy over the years. While she's been in this position, we figure there have been almost 200,000 checks written with gross wages paid in the amount of $315 million. That's a lot of checks. We started a new program for timekeeping. And Christie, she was so patient with everybody, as y'all will attest to, and got the program implemented. She also volunteers every Thursday during their lunch hour and helps deliver meals on wheels. So for her, she's always kind and pleasant to people she works with and a great asset for the city of Springdale. Thank you very much.
I really miss Christie being across the hall from my office because I could go in there and get answers really quickly. And she's always good to stop what she's doing and to help. And I appreciate her very much. And I look forward to hopefully about six months from now when at least we'll be in the same building. So I want to thank, I wanted to thank Christie for all she does and the way she does it more than anything. Christie, do you have some family here you'd like to just give us a wave?
My husband and my son.
All right, great. Thank you guys for supporting her as she does her work. Appreciate it. With that said, from the city, we've got a little token of our appreciation and want to thank you so much for all you do and look forward to working with you for many years to come.
Thank you.
All right, do you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
I didn't think so. All right, thanks, Christie.
And one more recognition, it's not quite as happy because we're retiring a member at the end of the month, the end of this week, Ron Skelton. Just briefly about his career, I'm sure you all know Ron because he's been here forever. At least as far as that. But he's been a firefighter and EMT. You know, he drove apparatus. He was an engine company captain, a ladder company captain, chief of the training division, an operations battalion chief, shift commander, and currently the assistant fire chief, emergency operations. And so he's also past executive director of the Regional Northwest Arkansas Regional Hazardous Materials Team, the founder of the operations group of the Metro Fire Chiefs Association. So that just gives you an idea of kind of the depth and breadth of his experience and knowledge of the job of the city and of the department. But really what we're going to miss the most is the way he cares for people, the way he approaches situations, and the way he handles things in a professional, firm but fair manner. And you know, really not a week goes by I don't take something away of value. So we're going to miss that. Luckily, I'm not going to miss it too much because he's going to move right down the hall and continue to work for the city for as long as, as long as he wants to. So. Right?
Yeah, that's good.
But really, he's done a lot to advance our, in particular, health and wellness initiatives. So like directly affecting the lives and the health and well-being of our firefighters. And so that's really been an amazing thing to see. So Ron, on behalf of the city of Springdale, for your 33 full-time paid years of service to the Springdale Fire Department, I hope you'll say just a little something. I have found that when he chooses to speak, it's worth, it's worth your time and attention.
It's easiest if I can get it out. I've had to do these retirement things, you know, the last five years, and it gets harder and harder because the guys, you know, I've worked longer and longer with them, so I can't say this is any easier. I would like to thank the city for providing me a career where I could work in the city that my wife and I wanted to be and raise my family. I don't know what else, how more I can, appreciation I can put out than that. That means everything to us. I appreciate it.
Ron, thank you for all your years of service. You've been great to work with for the time I've been here. And I know that, I know that the city owes you a lot that we can never repay for the work you've done and for the areas where you've led. So thank you very much.
And you're all welcome to join us Friday afternoon, too, if we can do it again.
Friday at 3:00, is that right?
3:30.
3:30, okay. Good deal. All right. We're to item 11, appointments. And I'll go ahead and read this. We have an opening on our A and P Commission. And this is a, this is a position that needs to be filled by someone in the service industry. And so I'll read the resolution. A resolution making an appointment to the Advertising and Promotion Commission of the city of Springdale. We're, I'm bringing before you a nomination of Brian, gosh, I've forgotten Brian's last name all of a sudden. Yeah, Brian Stanley. I know him, you can see him every time you go to Chick-fil-A. And Brian does a great job. Certainly, we're certainly happy to have him and his family in Springdale and look forward to him serving on the, on the A and P Commission. So I've made a motion, or I've read the ordinance or the resolution.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Great, thank you and welcome to Brian. And Brian, we appreciate your willingness to serve. Item 12, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie. Patsy's out this week, so it's likely Rick's going to handle that. Good deal.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, really speak up.
Can you hear me now? Is that any better?
You'll have to really speed that mine.
All right. First up, we've got the R2242 rezon. For Juan and Maria Silva. This is a rezon from C2 to C6 of approximately half an acre. An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C2 to large product retail sales district C6 and declaring an emergency.
Rick, what's going to go in there?
I don't know that we are fully aware at this time. They're not required to provide that information at the time of rezon. But based upon it being a C6, that is, as stated, large retail product sales. So more than likely something like a car lot.
Was there any opposition at Plan Commission?
None that I am aware of.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Move the merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
All right, next up is a rezon, R2243, for Iglesia Pentecostes Nuevo de Jerusalén, rezoning from SF1 and C2 to C2. This is approximately 6.75 acres. An ordinance amending ordinance numbers 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low-density, single-family residential district SF1 and general commercial district C2 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency.
We just recently changed the tract right behind that. Did we change that to SF1? Can you remember?
I can't say for sure if it's SF1. I do recall though that it was rezoned. I can get back to you with that answer.
Was there any, anybody at the planning meeting against this or?
This in particular, I don't believe so. And I don't believe that there were any votes against it by the planning commission either.
Is this just going to allow a church over there?
I believe that it is intended to be sold, but I can't say for sure. This is just the rezoning.
I assume that that area, it's normal to have a C2 next to a SF1 area.
Yeah, it would be more of a transitionary area. You've got Wagon Wheel immediately to the south and you'll have general commercial as C2 as a buffer between that main road and the residential SF1 behind it.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions?
So Mayor, how far does our city limits go north of that, do you remember?
We go all the way to Apple Blossom?
So quite a ways.
Yeah. The new Dixieland will be east of this. It'll come into Wagon Wheel east of this. Any other questions? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Move the merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
Next up is conditional use C2209, applicant developing equity LLC. And this is a conditional use for a tandem lot split out to the west of 56th Street and Parkway Circle, approximately a little over 16 acres. A resolution approving a conditional use at the west side of 56th Street, at the intersection of 56th Street and Parkway Circle for developing equity LLC as set forth in ordinance number 4030.
It's where the apartments are being constructed now, isn't it?
I haven't actually been out there just yet to see if they're constructing them. There, there is pure Springdale that's immediately like, or a little bit to the, what is that, south and east of that?
It's the old, it was begun, the street was cut in there as part of a subdivision that just never made years and years ago. Yeah, there are apartments going on now.
The school's land, I believe.
Yeah, school district bought some property there.
Is that what the yellow space is?
That highlighted yellow space is the reason for this conditional use. It's a tandem lot split. That little parcel is going to be used as, I believe, a pump station by Springdale Water Utilities. It's approximately 0.15 acres.
I believe the sewer line, sewer or water line for the city ends right there at that, where that is. Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions for anyone? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, conditional use number C22-11 for Ryan and Sarah McLean. This is a conditional use for a tandem lot split in an A1 district. In total, it's a little over 8.1 acres, split into about four and a half and about three and a half or so. This is a resolution approving a conditional use at East Wagon Wheel Road, 0.3 miles north from the 612 overpass for Ryan and Sarah McLean as set forth in ordinance 4030.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. Any further comments or questions for anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Kerry's eight zero.
And finally, our waiver is W22-11, the applicant being Beaver Water District. And this is a waiver of street improvements on Miller Road. The hatched area that you can see on screen is approximately 41 and a half acres. And this is a waiver of street improvements on Miller Road, West Miller Road. Resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks as set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Beaver Water District in connection with L2242, a large-scale development.
Move the resolution be adopted.
With option one?
I was going to ask which option Planning Commission recommended.
Did they grant the full waiver?
I believe they did, but I can't say 100%.
Second. That's your, that's your motion?
Option one.
Okay. And second, any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Item 13, we had a committee of the whole meeting. I think Jeff took that. So Jeff, if you want to about, you know, the building permit.
Thank you. So item 13 had to do with the discussion we've had a couple of times at two different committee meetings regarding the possible refund of a portion of the building permit fees that might be associated with the tornado or other natural disasters. And we did not have a resolution at the, at the committee meeting. And so we forwarded to council without any kind of recommendation. And we had asked Ernest and Mike, I think, Chambliss, to see if they could come up with a resolution for discussion. And it looks like basically what they've done is left a blank for a percentage to be filled in for the refund.
And I, we had another question kind of hanging out there, Jeff. And I think Ernest, Ernest can speak to this, but I think we, I think we're more comfortable now with doing this in a retroactive, which is required, right, Ernest?
Right, this, this is, pertains specifically to the disaster declaration of March 30th from the tornado. Those building permits, which I believe have been totally quantified, which are 20, I believe, were the total.
So basically, this doesn't cover any natural disaster from now on. It just, it's particular to that one tornado incident.
That's correct. If you wanted to do it a larger application, it would require an amendment to the ordinance. But this would go ahead and address the immediate request, basically.
Because this was still within, we're still falling within the emergency declaration. So, Ben?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend we offer a 25% rebate of the building permits for those affected by the storm damage.
So Ernest, with this being retroactive, are we still within the timeframe that would allow someone to pull a permit for this disaster?
Mike might want to speak to that. That's why I was saying, I think that they've all been quantified. If there's a, if there's a chance that someone may have to still do a permit from the tornado damage, we probably should add a clause that says those who have paid or, who have paid for and obtained or will obtain. I was just under the impression that perhaps everyone who needed a permit got one.
And we can verify that it's storm, it was related to this storm and, okay.
Mike, can you clarify that? You mean there's a few, there's half a dozen out there today? Is that what you said? And, but we don't know if that's pertaining to this or that they would qualify for this?
Can you turn your microphone on so?
Yeah. Well, there you go. Yeah, yeah. And let me, let me just, I, I may, I may ask some questions that I really meant to ask last time, but due to the microphone issue, I missed out on some things here that I couldn't piece together when I was on Zoom. So apologies in advance for asking.
To clarify, there are homes out there that have not had a building permit obtained at this time that were directly affected by the tornado.
Okay.
And we do know those homes where they're at.
And so Ernest, if we add a clause that would encompass that or would we have to bring up a similar resolution every single time?
No, we could, we could add in the now there for paragraph where it says a refund to those citizens who have paid for and obtained a building permit to add a clause in there that says, or will obtain. Right, right. That way it covers those happening themselves that are still out there. I think Brian had mentioned that to me a few days ago, and I hadn't thought of that when I drafted it, but that's easily added.
So I did not read the title on if, if we want this resolution with those two changes, first change being recommendation for a percentage. The second change would be what you just talked about on future applications for a permit. So I'm going to read the title. If someone wants to make the motion, it would be with those two changes, I assume. So.
Yes.
So the title to the resolution reads, "A resolution authorizing the refund of building permit fees associated with the disaster declaration of March 30th, 2022 in Springdale, Arkansas."
There you go.
Well, so Mr. Overton, the 25%, and I think this is what we were trying to figure out the other day, at least it's what I gathered from Zoom. What, is a 25% going to be effective enough? Or, and that might be, might be something Mike can answer to.
We know that we still have costs associated with, with the building permit. It's not, we still have costs associated with the building permits. And this is more of a, of a move to show the, the citizens of Springdale that we're affected by this storm damage, that we, we see a need and would like to provide them some assistance. But there are still other costs associated with their permit. That's the reason for coming up with that, but I'm open up to any other suggestion.
Yeah, and I don't have a number in mind. This is what I was hoping we could figure out today because Jeff made a point at committee as far as we also got to be accountable to the taxpayer and making sure we cover the cost for our cities. So I'm wondering, and this may be a dumb question, is there any sort of profit that we get in these permits that we could put a number to?
That's where all the vacations coming from, for the building part. Mr. Flores, I don't know if we'd actually quantify that tonight. Certainly, it would be somewhat difficult because different employers pay different rates, different employees do different inspections, the amount of time varies from place to place. It is not a, at the risk of signing crafts, it's not a profitable endeavor we're in. We don't make money on this.
And that's why I'm hesitant to ask.
In fact, just to kind of illustrate that, out of the first 20, and we're actually at 22 permits as of today, we've had a few come in the last couple of weeks that are more the bigger homes, the people who had actual insurance. They've had some discussions, those insurance companies, to get the amount they were going to receive. But out of the first 20, half of those permits were less than $100. They were, they were way smaller jobs. They were done, two of them were completed already. They were part of the mobile home park work. It is kind of a sliding scale, but as far as the money goes, as you've all alluded to, you're in charge, it's taxpayer dollars, however you want to spend them. We're happy to do it either way.
This was brought forward by a resident who has significant repairs.
The largest permit fee, yes, sir.
And that's what, that's what started this conversation.
I'm all, I'm all for helping the citizens. The problem I had, and it's a sl-.
I'm, I'm all, I'm all for helping the citizens. The problem I had, and it's the same problem I had last week, is I'm not convinced that the citizen is getting the break here because after checking with the insurance companies, and I've talked to another one, it's covered, it's not a line item. They're being paid by the insurance. Therefore, if a builder is charging them a fee, it's in that fee if he goes and pulls a permit. So I think at the end of the day, I'm not convinced that we're really helping a citizen because it, it's being paid by insurance. That's just my thoughts.
Mike, when you're putting numbers together, what kind of dollars are we talking about that at twenty-five percent, what would that save the average person?
You know, again, it's, it's wide variance from fifteen dollars to thirteen-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Altogether, the permit fees we've collected has been seven thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty dollars on everything that's storm-related for single-family residential.
So we're not talking a huge amount?
No, sir.
Pennies in the bucket?
A couple grand for twenty-five percent.
And how much do we have in our general fund right now?
Oh, Amelia, we've got... Probably, yeah, probably well north of, actually well north of fifteen million, I think. I mean, that's...
Thank you.
Yeah.
So twenty-five percent be eighteen-hundred-and-fifteen dollars in refunds on, on the amount that he's expressed right there.
I don't see a problem with going higher than twenty-five percent, in my opinion. I think there are probably are a lot of costs that we're not realizing that, um, these victims of the tornado, um, have endured. That's just my, my opinion.
Um, yeah, and, and, and I'm gonna say something that I probably shouldn't say, but Mike, you brought it to me, and I'm, I'm not gonna, I don't know any names, so I'm not gonna give any names, but I know that some of our residents have been, that, there's good people in Springdale. And some people, that we have had people come forward and pay several of these permits for, for, for some of the lower-income, uh, issues that, that we, that were damaged. So I, I just say that only to say that, uh, I know, I know whoever did this, and I, again, I don't know who it is or how many there were, but, but they obviously did it and wanted to stay anonymous, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna do anything to risk that. But I think it's important that we, we're reminded of what a commu-, what kind of community we live in too.
Does this only apply to residential permits or...?
That was my understanding from you. The other little permits ahead was the demolition permit for two different houses and then a commercial for the apartments.
But that's right, you're right, that's what we discussed, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but. It's one thing, or it's another.
Mike, uh...
About designating residential permits.
We, we could if we wanted to.
Wouldn't hurt.
That would be clear.
Yeah.
Well, I should, you know, if I had a million-dollar bill and I was wanting to rebuild, I'd sure be coming in.
We don't have a motion.
Yes, Overton made one.
Do you have a motion?
With those changes, yeah.
Including that it changed to resident.
The specified residential, so...
And to be clear, that motion was twenty-five percent.
Yes. Yeah, and that, my, my, uh, considering what, uh, Mr. Lawson and, uh, Amelia said, so you're saying we have how many under a hundred dollars?
Ten. Out of twenty-two now.
Okay, and then what are the rough numbers for the one, the other twelve?
A range of four hundred to six hundred, with again, one being, one being thirteen-hundred-and-sixty.
Yeah, yeah, one, that, that's the, the exception to this is the thirteen-hundred-dollar one. Uh, I mean, is it safe to assume that anybody with a bigger home, that, the disparity here is the lower-income ones that are around a hundred dollars or so are the non-insured and likely the, the trailers? Um, and then the, the anomalies in, in all the other expensive homes, those are likely insured that were, and those are the ones we're discussing that are likely covered.
That's true, and that, that's one reason I brought up the, the benevolent gift because that money, i- if there is a discount, that needs to be offered back to that benevolent.
Yeah, and we can track that, right?
Yes, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
So, you know, I have to, really, to what you're suggesting there, Kevin, but there are also a lot of these expensive homes, not a lot, I've heard of a couple that were underinsured.
Yeah.
Gristly, yeah, grossly underinsured, and so the insurance is definitely not paying for all the repair. So it may be, so it's not just as simple as whether they had insurance.
No, and I don't think any of this is simple, to be honest. It's, it's, uh...
I wanna second the motion.
I don't, and I, I guess I'll just say, yeah, and we're gonna move forward to, to vote on the twenty-five percent. I don't know if, you know, there was a gentleman that spoke to this last time that made it, over, oversimplified the process, and just when I was observing on video, I thought, I, I disagree. Um, so what I'd say is, in moving forward with this, uh, assuming this will pass, I, I think unfortunately, this is gonna be a good way to test this out. Uh, unfortunately for the, the, the people impacted by this, but fortunately for, you know...
Yeah, I don't think they want to be tested.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, you know, it, it could be a good thing for, from here on out.
All right, we have a...
Does anybody have?
Go ahead, Amelia.
Does any, yeah, that's okay. Does anybody have any issues with raising that from twenty-five to fifty percent?
Well, we got, we've got a motion that unless somebody wants to amend the motion, we'll have to vote on this motion first.
Mark, you got any concerns?
We can sure discuss it, and if anybody has any other thoughts.
I mean, what y'all were saying earlier, this is for this one-time event. We could always change it in the future, but that, so that's why I'm not having any problem with raising the dollar amount, when we're talking seven thousand total dollars and helping out when we've had this major event here in town and helping out the people that could use the money. And I, you know, I'd be, when I was first hearing this, I was hearing two-thirds, fifty percent, somewhere in there.
What, what number are you thinking?
That's what I said, fifty percent.
You know, I, I, oh, just given how we're doing okay financially and, and, and your comment of...
Exactly.
Trying this out, I, um, I mean, I know we're not voting on this, but I think I'm okay with that fifty percent.
Well, I'm gonna, uh, uh, we, we'll, we'll call, we'll, the vote on the motion on the table, motion is second on the table.
For fifty?
No, let's do a third.
Sixty.
A percentage would definitely be preferable to, to a fraction for our purposes and business purposes.
So, so what with, on the percentage, what is the percentage that's being plugged into the resolution?
Right, now the motion's twenty-five percent.
Well, I understand, but my question is, is, is the percentage, the reduction?
Reduce the total amount of whatever permit it is for that percentage.
We would be refunding those.
Okay, let's compromise and do a third.
That okay with you, Mike? Sixty-seven percent?
Yes, sir.
Like, well, can we, can we make it an even sixty-seven?
No, refund would be thirty-three.
Thirty-three, thirty-three and a third?
Thirty-three percent. Absolutely. If you wanna be away for about a year, well, modify.
Okay.
So I will second that amended motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to reduce the, to, the permit fee for this disaster by a third, by one-third, thirty-three and a third percent.
Three-three, four, three-three, three-three, three-three.
Yeah.
It's a P.A. case.
That's why we have...
That's the motion, so that's what we'll vote on first. All right? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Hmm, no.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
No, ma'am.
Flores?
No, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fidjirus?
No.
Pow?
No.
Fails three to five, or five to three, is there another motion?
Make a motion that we, uh, I make a motion that this resolution pass with the added nomenclature at, uh, fifty percent.
And does that include the residential and...
Residential only.
Residential only.
And the, um, anything related to this? That was it, right?
Future, the future.
Yep.
Uh, I second that. I second that.
Okay. We have a motion is second for the fifty percent reimbursement or forgiveness. Row. Row call.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
No, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
No, ma'am.
Fidjirus?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrie's six-two, fifty percent reduction with the added language.
Thank you. All right, we will turn item fourteen over to our city attorney.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency. This is property located at nine eighty-three West Sunset, and you probably noticed that that building came down, uh, within the last week, so you'll be seeing a, if they don't pay it, you'll be seeing another ordinance for the raise and removal cost as well. But this is for a separate cleanup lien that was done prior.
Move the orders pass.
Okay, we have a motion is second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yeah.
Watson?
Yes. Will the merge clause be adopted?
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero. The last item is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to abandon a drainage easement in the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. The public hearing will be August twenty-third, and the city clerk will publish notice as required by the statute. Uh, this is property located at, uh, Ole Missouri Road and Electric Avenue. Uh, they're actually relocating the drain, the drainage easement as part of the approved, uh, project on this site. So this would just set the public hearing as required by statute.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, motion is second to adopt the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirus?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen, any comments from council?
Mayor, I just want, I'd like to remind everybody that, and I know you saw the pictures, and I did, that the sport court's over at the rec center, and the other work they have done that we've approved, it's made drastic changes, and it's gonna be a great benefit. I meant to get by there today, but I know we've seen pictures and, pictures or anything, it's...
Yeah.
It's simply that, that open space is a whole new look now.
Yeah, I, I did, I did get by there Friday, and they had most of the rubber floor down, and it, you're right, it made a huge difference, and, uh, and now they're gonna be painting, uh, the, the area of concrete floor that's still exposed. Plus, there'll be, I think, I think the youth center's gonna be closed tomorrow morning, the rec center, uh, while they paint, uh, some of the interior closer to the construction at the entryway. So, so if you could get in there late tomorrow or, uh, or sometime Friday, Thursday or Friday, and see that, I think you'd all be pleased, um, so. Any other counsel?
Yeah, uh, mayor, I'd like to, again, on behalf of all of us, I think, thank, uh, James and his crew for the awesome job they did on this railroad crossing.
Yep.
Um, it's one of those underappreciated things, and so on behalf of the council, I'm sure, and the city, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, James. Y'all did a great job. Uh, hopefully this will be a good, uh... Hopefully, the railroad and the city will move together better in the future, uh, having this behind us. Uh, uh, we'll see, but y'all did a great job, so thank you. And they did too, yeah.
So mayor, I have a question on that.
Okay.
When we passed the, uh, ordinance or resolution or agreement, whatever it was before, with the railroad, that we'd be making the changes and we'd be paying for them, what's the steps in getting different crossings done? Do we just need their approval, and then we vote on that dollar amount?
We have to have their approval because it's dealing with their right-of-way, so, yes. We, but we do talk, we've talked about other crossings, probably not so much the one you, I know you're mostly interested in, um, but we can, we can continue to bring that up to the railroad. Uh, Mountain Road, James, is really bad, and I know that's not one of them that Jeremy with the railroad brought up, but, but we need to talk about all of them. We're also discussing some other grant possibilities, and we would, you know, we would help with the grant, uh, for larger project, we, we would help with the, with administering the grant, but, and, and, and probably pay the, but if we, if we end up paying the match, if there, if we were successful in a grant and ended up paying the match, the match would come out of those committed funds.
Okay, so Randall Woby was the one that's come up multiple times in conversation.
I think, um, we're in very, uh, preliminary discussions, and we are in agreement with the railroad on Randall Woby, but fixing that crossing may not be the best fix. Going over the crossing would be the best fix. So there may be a grant opportunity that we'll explore, but it's way too early to...
And so mayor, sticking, sticking with this, um, so we have some additional funding that we haven't had in the past that we may be able to allocate towards this, um, as far as in our budget, through the general or, um...
For what?
The crossings, yeah.
Oh, the crossings? Yeah, we, the, the commitment that we made, up to three million dollars, not to exceed three million dollars in a time period not to exceed six years, uh, that would come out of our general fund.
So is, is the issue the railroad funding then, at that point, and, and them?
It's the railroad's decision because it's their right-of-way. We can't work in their right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And I've, I've pretty well told them, it doesn't matter to me which ones you wanna fix. The council will have to approve it, but it doesn't, as long as it's coming out of that commitment, it doesn't matter. We, we, but we hope, we will work with them and hope we pick the ones that most affect our residents.
Are, are they, are they open to that, though? Are they open to...
I, I, I think so. I mean, there, it's, it's a process that's just starting. I mean, we're not very far into this six-year agreement, so, um, so, but they, they've mentioned some other crossings that they would like to see worked on and...
Yeah, I've gotten a couple of calls for Shady Grove, so, you know, we're all gonna get calls on these railroad crossings, and, and all of them are gonna be priority to that particular...
Well, and, and need to call us, certainly fine to call you all and us, and, but call the railroad too if there are certain crossings that you think need work. And we'll, we'll continue, I, I, I think we're building a good relationship with them, and I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't see any reason to mess that up. I think we oughta just move forward and try and, and try and get the crossings done that over this next five-plus years, that, that most help our, uh, our drivers on the roads.
So the partnership on this one out here, James, did it go well with the, okay? Everything seemed to, the coordination seemed to work out real well?
Okay, anything else? City attorney?
No, sir.
Nothing from me. We're adjourned. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.